I'm going to call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council Order. Today is August 7th, 2017. We start with the invocation by Pastor Don Stripling, First Presbyterian Church.
First of all, let me say that I really always hate to pray and run, but I have a pastoral call that I have to make after this, so I invite those who choose to to join me in prayer. God of all nations and peoples, we come before you this evening to give you thanks for the folks who are serving on our city council. We thank you for their willingness to serve your city. We thank you for their commitment to the well-being of your people. Thank you for their desire to be a blessing to the rich and the poor, the involved in the apathetic, the ungrateful, and the grateful. I pray you will bless them, O Lord, with open minds as they deliberate together, with wisdom as they make their decisions, and with vision as they plan for our future. Bless their best efforts to the benefit of all who work for the city, to the benefit of all who serve our city, to the benefit of all who live in our city and visit our city. This I pray as a disciple of Jesus Christ, through whom I know my prayer is not in vain. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Did you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Here.
Call Jure?
Here.
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Okay, thank you. First opportunity we have on the agenda is for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. We do ask that statements be kept brief. Time shall be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff, the council members, or the mayor, we ask that you speak to people away from this meeting so that they can be properly researched and perhaps even answered away from the meeting. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Yes, ma'am. Please come to the microphone, name an address.
My name is Julie Wells. My address is, well, my business address is 216 South Market. Home address?
Nope, that's fine.
My husband and I travel. We own Julie's Own South Cafe, which we just started our ninth year in business, so the Oskaloosa community is very important to us. And recently, we've become a little concerned with the agenda on the two-hour parking. As business owners, we find that it's very important to have some kind of restriction due to the fact that if you do not have two-hour parking, if I understand it correctly, at this point in time, we go to 72 hours. And as a business owner, it's hard for me to not have any recourse between a two-hour moment to a 72-hour moment. 72 hours being your minimum because, of course, you know, you're going to give them time, you're not going to call and complain right away, or, you know, voice your concern, and then the officer would have to come and mark the tire, and it would be 72 hours from that point. So you have the potential for more than three days of somebody being parked directly in front of your business. That's a concern of mine. We did go around and speak to several business owners, and we could not find anybody that was actually, everybody was concerned about the vast difference between the two-hour restriction to the 72 hours. So as far as I understood it, that's where we're standing right now on the issue, and I would like the council to consider some other alternative to going from two hours to 72 hours. Basically, I mean, I'm not arguing the two-hour restriction idea. I get it, people to come to the community to shop, maybe eat, and have ample time to do that. I just think that business owners need more recourse than 72 hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask a question? I appreciate your input. Do you have any thoughts on what would be good? I'd love to hear them.
For us, as a business owner, we're limited hours for breakfast and lunch, so the two-hour parking, very, in a limited way, helps us, so.
Do you realize, Julie, that that two hours is not enforced?
Yes, I do. I actually realized that when I did call the police department about a vehicle that was parked outside of our business all day. And so I called, and that's when the officer advised me they were not enforcing it. I knew that they weren't enforcing it, like, on a regular basis, but I did not realize that I had no recourse if there was somebody parking no longer than two hours. I mean, I understood there wasn't somebody going around checking, but I had no option to do anything different than to wait 72 hours, you know? And that's hard for a business owner to swallow. In speaking with the business owners in the community that we spoke to, and we spoke to quite a few, I think everybody's kind of thinking you could extend the two hours a little longer, and that would be easier to handle. The main concern was not having any recourse for three days. That was the main concern. We have a lot of apartments and that, even more to open up, and parking is an issue, so that was just something we felt we needed to come and address.
When we came, did they come and mark the tire then, when you called?
No, the officer told me they were directed to not enforce it, and therefore I had, my recourse would have been 72 hours, and by that time, it would have been, I just didn't, I was, I was actually kind of upset, but I thought by then they would have moved it because it was over the weekend, and I didn't, and the vehicle was gone. If it had have been gone, I probably would have called again and said, could you mark it?
Thank you.
But I took my chances on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. The next item is the consent agenda. These are all items considered routine by the city council. We'll handle them all in one motion. I did want to draw the council's attention to item F, where we have the appointment of Eric Stout to the Historic Preservation Commission, and then also item M, where we're scheduling a public hearing for September 5 to consider levying a special assessment against private property for nuisance abatement. That's an $848 bill. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I've got either questions or pulled the last item, but I think I just ask my questions if it's okay with you.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that first.
It's on this, the Fire Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan, and Mark Stouts starts out and says, you know, this isn't the same as EMS, but if you go to the next to last, third to the last page, page 2 or 3, a couple of questions on the grayed end. Since 2010's a long ways past, go down to the 2016 plan, and it says, "Purchase and install backup generators for critical facilities and designated shelters," and then the last one, "Increase the size of the fire department." Now, I think some of these goals have already been made. I wasn't sure on increase the size of the fire department, if we're talking about personnel or building. And I probably heard it back then, but I'm asking again now.
Correct, Councilman Walling, and part of that was part of the fire station build, and the backup generator falling to that, and then increasing on reserve staffing was where that, where those got folded into.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, would be reserve staffing.
Is that the only generator you were talking about there?
As far as ours, yes, but I do know there's been some other backup generators being placed out, the sewage treatment plants, things like that, so.
And the very first one under the 2010 is probably a can of worms. Upgrade the current outdoor warning sirens, because as you know, we got rid of those sirens, and they went to EMS, but there's going to be discussions about that, too, coming up in the future, I think, so, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you. Thanks, Moore.
Anyone else have any comments on the consent agenda? See, we got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Call Jure?
Yes.
That passes. Item 6 is the announcement of vacancies we have on various boards and commissions. First is the Airport Commission. We have a vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on December 31st of 2021. It's a five-member board, typically meeting on the first Monday of the month. We have four males and no females currently serving, one vacancy. Next is the Building Code Board of Appeals. There's one ex-officio member to represent the perspective of rental housing property owners and rental housing tenants to the Building Code Board of Appeals and serves at the pleasure of the mayor. It's a five-member board with two ex-officio members that meet as needed. Historic Preservation Commission is third. That has one vacancy to fill upon appointment for a term that ends on December 31st of 2018, and one vacancy for an alternate member. It's a seven-member board with two alternate members that meets as needed. We have five males and two females currently serving, one vacancy for an alternate member. Fourth is the Library Board. We have one vacancy to fill upon appointment for a term ending on June 30th of 2023. It's a nine-member board that typically meets the fourth Monday of the month. We have four males and four females currently serving, one vacancy. Fifth is the Municipal Housing Agency, with a vacancy to fill upon appointment for a term ending on February 28th of 2019. It's a five-member board that meets quarterly, two males and two females currently serving. And then finally, the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's one vacancy to fill upon appointment for a term ending on April 30th of 2019. It's a seven-member board that typically meets on the second Tuesday of the month, four males and two females currently serving, one vacancy. Getting into the regular agenda, item A is to consider a resolution of support for the Mahaska Development Partners Business Plan and Memorandum of Understanding. The city of Oskaloosa serves as a significant resource, financial investor, and partner in the local economic development activities within the community. And as a result, the city council is being asked by local economic development groups, namely, the Oskaloosa Area Chamber and Development Group, which is, acronym is OACDG, Mahaska Community Development Group, MCDG, Main Street Oskaloosa, and the Mahaska County Agricultural and Rural Development Group, MCARD, to provide an official endorsement for the ongoing efforts to formalize a shared vision and strategic plan for growing the economy and improving the quality of life in Mahaska community. The city's support would come through adoption of resolution of support in addition to allocating funding and staff resources that are necessary to continue coordinated economic development functions. Attached to this agenda item are the draft documents recently distributed to the boards of OACDG, MCDG, Main Street, and MCARD for their consideration and possible approval. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution of support. In addition, staff recommends and encourages further effort to consolidate and refine the operational structures of the existing economic development organizations in the Mahaska community. In other words, single dues-paying organizations, single vision, input from stakeholders, et cetera. The recommendation is not intended to target or eliminate positions, but rather further refine how dues-paying members of the various organizations can receive the most cost-effective and productive product for their dollar. Do we have a motion supporting this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
What kind of financial impact is that going to have? What are we going to do differently than what we do now with these same organizations?
I don't think any change is anticipated. But, you know, Andrew, do you have any further comments?
With this action, it's not committing any changes in funding. I know that development partners are continuing to look how they work more closely together, but this in particular is more about commitment to work, towards this kind of.
I understand that, but they're also asking for monetary stuff as well, so what's that going to amount to?
So I haven't been involved in any discussions of changing for funding for the existing organizations.
What does the Mahaska community look like? If you've seen it on a map, what's that look like?
Mahaska community? General speaking of the Mahaski community, although I know from my time when I was at MCDG, when we referred to the Mahaski community, those organizations that are involved in the community, so, for instance, employers down in the industrial complex are involved as well, so.
So it spills over into Waukato County, Monroe County, spill over to Pella as well?
Does? Yeah, I mean, there's no, I think intentionally no specific political boundaries.
I sat through the presentation, and I strongly support continuing, but there were several of us there that felt they still got a long ways to go. I mean, there's some things to be worked out in our community about this, and how we share it, and how we don't duplicate, but grow it together, so, but they seem willing to work on that.
And that's my concern, because like it says in here, a shared vision and strategic plan, which I haven't seen anything of on this, but when that meeting you're referring to that we attended, I get the sense that, but these organizations, they do need to work together and communicate better, because I got the feeling when I was in the meeting, it was just, everybody had their own agenda. It seemed that way. Nothing was said, but just, it seemed that way. But I like to see, you know, what the visions are and how to move forward with all these organizations, what the plans are, and that's better than the meeting.
What's going to be the driving force behind that? Vision.
The driving force behind the shared vision, is that what the question? I think that's, again, I'm just speaking to my past history, so I've been involved in most recent schedules, but I think that comes through the strategic planning process, of key stakeholders together, and working through and understanding what that shared vision is, and doing that collectively.
Beth, do you have anything to add to that, or?
Sure.
That'd be great.
I think a lot of what you say, what Andrew is saying, and what is shared in your opening notes is exactly, is exactly right. The way we work right now is economic development groups, each group sets its own strategic plan and its own vision, and the idea behind this is, if we don't take this first step to begin to work together, then we're going to continue to work in silos, and we don't want to do that anymore. We want to, as you said, Joe, begin to plan together, begin to work together, begin to allocate our resources. We have individual resources now, but we know they come from, sometimes from the same businesses, and some, and we, you know, we have, our governments are supporting that, and so what we want to do is begin to plan together and look at how we allocate the resources to forces that we can get done, so.
It was an interesting meeting, because there was, there was quite a few people represented. Now, it was just a babysat start, but just to get, you know, the supervisors represented, Farm Bureau was even there, so, I mean, I just, you know, it was.
Yeah, from my perspective, this is, it's only a step, it's not the end of the, it's the beginning of the journey, and I think we need to support it. Obviously, there's concerns going forward of the entities operating separately. We addressed that last year in our budget session, but to me, this is a great first step. We got to walk before we can run, or maybe we got to crawl before we can walk, but it's a great first step, and I feel we need to support it.
Good. Thanks, Beth.
I have a quick question for you, Beth, if I could. So, I mean, my take on this is that it just formalizes communication that should already be occurring, but doesn't, so perhaps with this, maybe that will make people feel like they need to talk more, but my question is, is why, I understand Pella took that final step, if you will, and they organized under one organization, right? Everybody's rowing in the same boat now. We still have these different boats, and we're all hoping we're rowing in the same direction, so to speak. What kept us from doing the same thing? What kept us, because that's one of the recommendations that the staff has here, is that at some point in time, we do become, as it's written here, we do become one organization with one overarching structure, if you will.
Sure.
So what, in your opinion, what kept that from happening here in Oskaloosa?
So I think there was concern, we do have four organizations now, and I think there was concern especially among Main Street, because we're a Main Street charter community. Main Street Iowa and National Main Street requires you to have a certain organization, and they require you to operate under certain protocols. And the Mahaska Community Ag and Rural Development, they operate a revolving loan fund, and so that, that is granted currently to that organization. It doesn't mean, as we go forward, if we're working together, can we agree to be more blended in what we do? It doesn't mean we have to dissolve those organizations, but the way that's laid out, what you see is now, we're all going to be meeting together, there'll be certain representatives meeting routinely together, so what prevented us from doing that was those specific.
Gotcha. My understanding is, is the MCDG director that they eventually hoped to hire will be, the way it was described to me, anyway, is they, somebody said this is an umbrella, and they're kind of at the top of the umbrella, and they'll kind of, kind of, I don't know, direct this whole thing, if you will, I don't know if that's the right terminology, but, but my concern is, is that they don't have any direct control, or those people don't report to them, correct?
Correct.
They report to their individual boards?
Correct.
So I could just see the time coming when the MCDG person's sitting down in their review, and, to their board, and maybe something didn't go as well as the board would have liked it to have gone throughout the year, and they're being held accountable for somebody in another organization that they have no control over. I mean, that'd be like me going back to work and having a review, right? And, and being responsible for the performance of folks that don't report to me. And I think that's a difficult position to put someone in.
So the idea behind what that individual is responsible for is, and we say specifically, that individual is going to be responsible for causing that collaboration to happen, that that means cause people to come together, we cause them to plan together, we cause them to work together, and everybody agrees what's going to be done. So they're not going to be responsible for the Main Street Director, you know, our current structure, but they will be held accountable for causing this partnership to stay together and to work together. So that's what they'll be accountable for.
But they don't have direct control over those folks, so I don't know how they can make them show up at the table if they decide they don't want to show up at the table. That would be the other board's responsibility for that director, so you're, as a director, and let's say I'm the MCDG director, and the chamber decides for whatever reason they're not going to show up, I'm accountable for that. That's what concerns me, I guess, that's, yeah.
Sure. So the agreement is, the agreement is intended to say, all partners agree, we're going to work together.
Right.
If somebody doesn't show up, then they're not in line with the agreement.
Well, to a certain extent, they need to keep their own identities, anyway, otherwise you'd have somebody that's ruling, being a ruling class, and that's not what you really need, either. You need those other ideas to, to get ahead in this world, not just one.
I believe you need all different kinds of ideas. I absolutely agree with that. I like diversity. I just think they all be in the same boat when they're doing it, so.
So when these four organizations come together, like, for example, the strategic planning, I mean, one of the first steps to do a spot analysis, put the routes, get all that information together, and start the strategic planning, and most of those goals probably be ten to eleven. And I understand there'll be some things that's only per group, not per group, you know, but most important, like you said, getting all four groups, it's four, right? Yeah, four, together, and moving forward. That needs to happen.
And I think the idea is, who will fit in with just those four groups? The city's a stakeholder, the county's a stakeholder, and Sierra, the school, William Penn, I mean, everybody's a stakeholder, so.
Right.
I've talked about those things. Everybody's.
Yeah, like Beth said, baby steps.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Call Jure?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
I've got a hint of a game, man.
Thought I was hearing stereo.
Yeah.
That passes.
I wanted to note that he voted twice. Oh, no.
They're going to come get me now.
Yeah, let's see here, moving on. Item B is to consider a resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 to issue debt to reimburse the city of certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects. So, city council approved in the fiscal year 2018 budget an authorizing of staff to proceed with issuing general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed of $1,650,500 for the Lacy Recreation Complex Road Improvements Project. Issuance of the bonds will occur after the bids are received for the project next calendar year. In the meantime, there's going to be expenses that have to be paid, mainly for design and construction services, and so in order for the city to reimburse funds it spends with bond money, a resolution declaring the intent to do so has to be approved by the city council ahead of time. So do we have a motion supporting this resolution?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Matt didn't want me to point out that this is just the first step, so you'll see a contract coming through fairly soon, and that's going to roll into it, and then we'll start the bonding project.
Okay.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Which roads are we talking about?
Does that really pertain to this?
Well, it might.
Then it's not specified in the agenda item.
But it's the ones we've been talking about out there, right?
Well, that general area, yeah.
Not all the roads that have been plowed, but the ones that we've been talking about.
Well, all the roads was over five to six million dollars, so it certainly didn't apply to that.
Yeah.
But with specific ones, I'm assuming it's still the two that we've talked about.
It's what you, it was what was added during the budget session.
Okay.
So we talked about that, I think, towards the end of the budget session, and agreed on that, and we added that to the budget.
Yep.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Call Jure?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. That gets us through the regular agenda as well. Reports from city staff, city manager, of course, isn't here, city clerk, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, city attorney, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Move forward onto council members. Start with you, Joe. Anything as far as what you would like to talk about, and for that matter?
Not at this time.
Okay?
No, thank you.
Nothing, sir.
Okay.
Not tonight, sir.
Okay. Because this is the opportunity for any boards or commissions you're on to go ahead and talk about that, okay?
Well, the commission's still meeting, and at the last meeting, we had a little bit of a slowdown, I'll call it.
This is emergency management.
Emergency management, thank you. The, but Supervisor Ritterdike has said he'll go back to the supervisors and talk about their will to do this. Now, they actually talked about it today, but I wasn't there, and I haven't seen it on TV yet, but I will.
Okay, the will to do what?
The will to, bond, not pay for necessarily, but bond for the countywide radio system.
The only thing different to Chamber is they've been waiting for the MCDG director to get hired before they go out and seek a director for the Chamber, and they've now decided to go ahead and do that, so my understanding is they're opening a requisition now to, to hire a director for the Chamber.
Okay.
So that's the only thing new there.
Okay. I had a few things I wanted to draw the council's attention to. One is, we got a very nice thank you note with much gratitude and appreciation for the effort being made to put the curbs along North C Street, signed by a number of members of the College Avenue Friends Church, so if you haven't seen this already, there's a lot of signatures there, so, yeah, job well done and appreciated by them. There's a thank you note we received from the Oskaloosa Main Street thanking the city for the help with the sweet corn saranade, especially with the placement of cones and the electricity, because I know there were some issues with that as the band was starting to play that night, so they're thankful to the city for that. And we also received a letter from the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs, and it says, "Dear certified local government partner," did you know that? We are one. You know, that the national, the National Services recently announced that there are now 1,966 communities participating in the Certified Local Government Program for Historic Preservation. The number is significant for a couple reasons. First, it represents a strong commitment to preservation in our country. Second, the National Historic Preservation Act that was passed in 1966, making this a particularly symbolic number. In honor of this milestone, the National Park Service has made certificates for each of Iowa's 93 certified local governments. It's suitable for framing, we hope you'll display it in City Hall. Iowa has one of the strongest and largest certified local government programs in the nation, and so whether we joined the program when it first began in 1985, or just this year, coincidentally, April 10 of 1986 is when Oskaloosa got into this, it's been, your Historic Preservation Commission is part of a very effective statewide preservation network, and so we have a certificate here that's in celebration of the 50th anniversary of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. The National Park Service, Department of the Interior, is congratulating Oskaloosa, Iowa on being a certified local government and partner in the federal preservation program since April 10 of 1986. And so this is what it looks like. And so I assume we have room in the budget for getting this framed and put in a place of prominence. If nothing else, I imagine we could remove a picture of one of the council members and then go ahead and.
That was fun.
But anyway, it's nice to be recognized, and so we thankful, especially thankful to all the people that have been working in the historic preservation for many, many years. I guess I didn't realize '86 was when we got going on this. I always thought it was just part of the city's culture, but it's absolutely a commitment, so congratulations to us for that. And then, moving on into the rest of the agenda, I believe we have an opportunity for a closed session under Iowa Code Section 21.5.1(c) to discuss strategy with council on a matter presently in litigation or which litigation is imminent, where disclosure would likely prejudice or disadvantage the city's position, so we, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
You want this one, Steve, or?
No, I got it.
Okay, yes.
Burnett?
Yeah, let's do it, yeah.
Call Jure?
Yeah.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yep.
Prusay?
Thank goodness, there's nothing left of this agenda.